Good evening, it's six o'clock. We'll have the regular school board meeting for the Granite Falls School District, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
It's too late now.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Before that, I'd like to make a motion, we excuse Director Ladue.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Director Butler, Director Kincaid, Director Carey, and Director Beach. And. And Ava is our school board representative and Dr. Middleton. Um, I always gotta remember. So let's start out with two A, born comments. For Wasda report back and other comments, Director Butler.
So yeah, Wasda Conference was great, I've been to several of these over the years. Enjoy going to the law conference, learn about things that are on the horizon, need to be aware of. Lot of it, people are aware of just because of the news. What's good to get the perspective of lawyers and what it could mean for us. Nothing really to report, it's all just a lot of uncertainty, just be ready for what happens. I enjoyed the sessions, I spent the most time learning about inclusion and equity. And what that means going forward, I also really enjoyed the professional support and the peer support you get from going to Wasda. Honestly, Wasda reminded me of like what I really love about being on the school board. I love representing the people of Granite Falls, I loved, like, I mean, you see the picture behind Ava, I love supporting the reading in elementary schools. I love helping the football games, working the chains. Especially love helping deliver all the food at the food drives, buying lunch for the coordinators on the delivery day. I think one of my favorite moments of the school board was actually delivering with students. And then I would challenge them if they sang a Christmas carol to the family we delivered to, I'd buy them hot cocoa, so that was always fun making kids feel awkward, but. I'd get, help them spread Christmas cheer. I love, I mean, I remember making hot cocoa for the band when they practiced late at night in the cold. Bought a drum for the band, I helped build those eagle cards back there, I helped install the seatbelts, one of them. Love getting to know all the teachers, Wasda just brought all the things to my memory. Especially proud, reminded me of the chance, I had to leave this board for five years, three different times. As the board chair, especially all the hard work we all did during COVID, unprecedented is the only way that you can really put it. I love looking back thinking, I wish I could have done this different or that different, but unprecedented means that you have no idea at the time. And I think really what made, what's, Wasda reminded me that all the change that we go through on the board is what's made me love it the most. Changes in my life as well, not just in the school board, working family are always changing, often required more of my time. So it's kind of on that and with that in mind that I am. We're gonna announce that my last school board meeting as a director will be. At the end of January, our last meeting in January, I'll be stepping down from the school board. I just, you know, with changes in family and work and, and life, I, it's, it's time. It's been, just shy of a decade. And. I'm, I'm only okay with, with this because I know we have such a great board in place, great administrators and great teachers and a great community. I'm also good because a lot of the things that I listed, I love. You know, that I will do as a board member, I can still do. We already talked to Dawn and Paige about continuing helping support the reading program and, and the food drive, good luck getting rid of me. I'll still be able to do those things, but it's, it's time just to step away from the board, not, not stepping away from Granite, but just from the board. And I'd like this time just publicly to say thank you to the community who's, who's, who's voted for me, who's shown me the confidence, given me. The confidence I needed to represent them and the students and the teachers and the staff, administrators, it's. Crazy to think, a quarter of my life has been spent doing this. Just wanna say thank you. I don't plan to be the lame doc, I'll be at all the meetings, doing all my stuff until the end of January, but at that time, I'll be stepping down and. These fine people will have to find someone to replace me, so. I know Dr. Middleton probably shares, Dr. Middleton will share some details on that process, but if you're watching and you live in my district, you can look it up online, I encourage you to. Look at serving, maybe you can be here for ten years too, so, thank you. Yeah, I'm willing to explain that now since I'm leaving. Dr. Middleton and I have a little game we play sometime. When we're at events where there's clapping, the person to clap last wins. If you ever like an event, you hear like a little clap at the end, that's me winning.
Thank you. Director Kincaid.
And then we'll have to follow up.
I know, it was tough. Uh, Wasda was great, it was my first time going, I learned a lot of really useful information. And I also really enjoyed getting to know my fellow board members a little bit better, getting to spend some time outside of this room with them. I also got to hang out with Ava a little bit, and I think we should be really proud that she's on our board because she's an outstanding, outstanding gal. I, a lot of the sessions I did focused around smaller school districts. Even though we're not technically in that category, I wanted to kind of learn what they were going through, they're all in kind of small towns like we are. And as you probably all know by now, my passion is parental involvement, so I wanted to see what they were doing to get their community and parents involved. So that's kind of where I spent a lot of my time, two things that I took with me that I'm excited about, I'm looking more into, wanna kind of get the fly in everybody's ear to. Think about it, I learned about outdoor school, so back in March of this year. Legislature passed House Bill 2078, which is recognizing the need for outdoor school. And bringing that into our school, so they pretty much offer it for fifth grade and sixth grade. And it's free, so, you know, I'm a chief of state, so I love anything that's free, but OSB pays for all of it and. It is a great opportunity for kids to get outside and. Do some learning there, what, a quote that they have in the House bill that I just wanted to read was. They find that time outdoors helps children thrive physically, emotionally, and academically. Yet over the past few generations, childhood has moved more indoors, on average, today's kids spend up to forty-four hours per week in front of a screen. And less than ten minutes a day doing activities outdoors. So, that's just something I'm really excited about, and hopefully we can get going here as an outdoor school program, either in fifth or sixth grade. I know when I was in fifth grade at my school, we did outdoor school. I went to a very tiny school, but it was an awesome opportunity where we all kind of bonded and it was. A way that we could be kind of outside of school but doing different things, that's where I learned how to use a compass for the first time and do all that sort of thing. I felt, and if I look back in all the times of my schooling, when we had opportunities like that. Gave the students a chance to get to know each other, bullying was a lot less, because we've got to actually spend time together and see each other in different ways. So I'm a big advocate for that. The second thing that I was introduced to by a ton of different board members from different school districts. Is a program that they use for parent communication called Parent Square. And it's kind of. Everything that we have kind of all rolled into one, so it's kind of like Skyward and Remind and all these things rolled into one. Where you can consolidate all these communications to parents in one place, such as transportation alerts, sports teams alerts, even classroom communication newsletters. Information can be sent out, you can type up one thing and it will go out over at the app, text, emails, voice, et cetera. Things like absences, permissions of forms, payments, all those kinds of things can go through it, but the coolest part of it is. That when parents have the app, they can go in and they can select from over a hundred different languages. And whatever we put out automatically gets translated into their language, it's a really cool thing. Especially for those ELL parents, so that's something, I, I was in the middle of a meeting and someone messaged or told me about it and I emailed Karen right away, I was like, Karen. We got, this is awesome, so anyway, so that's just a couple of things I took away from Wasda and I really had a good time, so.
Director Perry.
Yeah, thank you for not, sorry Carly, and thank you for not calling me directly after Director Butler. I, I, Wasda was great, but I guess, I, I just wanted to say a couple of things from my heart about Director Butler. And I'm not gonna look at him because I'll start crying and never get through this, so it's been my honor to serve with him for the, the past ten years. In ten years, Director Butler has gained a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, had, I think it was three kids. Run, run a marathon. Four, was it four? Ran a marathon, ran a five K with me, I'm certainly not at a marathon level. And has led the district, led the district through one of the greatest challenges public education has ever had, which is through the, the COVID shutdown and all of that and. Through all of that has done it due to fully determined to be the absolute best representative that he can be. It's funny, earlier we, we were laughing about my, my, my humility or potentially my lack thereof. A lot honestly of what you guys see of, of the crowd today is, is kind of a false bravado. It's people like, like Director Butler that I want to be like, that I strive to be like. That in, that are an inspiration to me personally to work harder or try to do a little bit more. Or, you know, stay connected. I, I'm personally a man of faith and on stuff like this. I always try to turn to the Lord and scripture came to my mind just as you were talking, which is. Second Timothy four. I have fought the good fight, I finished the race, I kept the faith. And I don't think there's a better representative of that than you, Director Butler, and. I appreciate you in so many ways, but most of all, I appreciate your dedication to the, the community and to the students that we serve. And the people of District Number Two have been extremely well representative and, and in the last ten years, and your shoes are gonna be. Impossible to fill, so I just wanted to, to make sure I told you thank you from the bottom of my heart. The Wasda stuff, there, there's a ton to talk about, about Wasda and what a weird transition. But, so I, I'll separate my comments maybe into two different board comments, I, I certainly don't want to talk for twenty minutes and I know you guys don't want to hear me talk for twenty minutes. One of the, the, the two things that I think were of the most value to me that I got from Wasda is. A, a, a pre-conference that I was able to attend that was about belonging. And one of the themes of, of the conference was how a lot of districts, and I would put us in that category, put belonging ahead of achievement. And that belonging has to and must always come before achievement. And the need for us to kind of focus on that belonging piece. Just as, just as fervently as we focus on the academic piece, because you're, you're never going to get there, there's steps, you're never going to get to true. Academic success unless you have an air of belonging, so. I will certainly raise my hand to someone who wasn't focusing as much on belonging as, as I should, and that's certainly something that. I plan to rectify, the other thing, the other big piece that I got from Wasda. Again, with talking with the colleagues around and going to the meetings and, and actually honestly getting the ability to talk to. Some of the winners of Boards of Distinction and stuff like that, you know, from medium, small school districts and up to the large. And kind of talking to them about best practices and things that they do. And there was a kind of a theme through all of them that I wrote down a couple of times as I was taking notes, which is data. That the need for a board to really lean into data. And to make sure that data, student success as well as of course belonging. Is leading the decisions that you're making, that you are leaning into that data, focusing on that data and letting the data dictate. The decisions that you make. Is one of the things, Dr. Middleton and Board Chair Beach and I had a great meeting with a, a, a local school psych. And that was kind of one of the things that even he said, so it was fortuitous that in the beginning of Wasda and all through Wasda. We kind of hit that, and you know, and. Was, to be honest, right, we don't, we aren't a, a large district that is flush with cash, right? So I think, you know, making decisions based upon what the data tells us that we need to do. Focusing on student achievement as well as belonging, I'll make sure I continue to say that, is really our only. Is our only exit ramp to getting to where, where we all feel that we need to go. As far as that belonging and that achievement piece goes, you know, making sure that we have people in the right places. That making sure that money is being spent in the right places, again, you know, looking at that data and letting the data push the decisions that we make. I, I was reading kind of one of the pamphlets and. That they handed out in one of the breakout sessions I got and, you know. The, if you, if you look at the majority of high performing districts, they have a boards that are very well focused on that data piece and. I, I certainly want to do that, I even bought myself this cup that I take everywhere that says, nice story, now show me the data. And I'm going to bring that to every board meeting to remind myself that we need to be focusing on that data piece. I've got more to say about that, we're, we're going to have a discussion on. Data and, and school reports later on in the meeting, so I guess I won't belabor the point and discuss it there, but I. I, I'm passionate about this, this district, I'm passionate about, you know. Our outcomes, our desired outcomes and where we think we can go, and I, I want to be as data focused as, as I possibly can. To the, to the point of where, and this is something that we can talk later, but I just want to throw that out, that, you know. We are a new board with Director Ladue who's not here today, obviously we're going to have another director here sometime in, in February. That maybe we even need to look at our strategic plan and maybe not necessarily redo the whole plan, but modify some of our. Some of our key points of the strategic plan, and I would highly contend that. That, you know, review of data, understanding of data, data leading our decisions, belonging, you know, that those pieces become integral. To that, so obviously that's something that we can talk more down the road, but that, that's kind of where I'm at, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, Wasda was a really cool opportunity for me because I got to connect with my board more. And I got to network with other school district representatives who. See what they do different at their school and how they make it better and how I can make our, help make our school better. And so that was really cool, I got to meet a lot of new people. But about our high school, what's going on? Today, we hosted a new event called Freshmas. And we served a wonderful meal prepared by our culinary class and led some fun games to make our freshmen feel more welcome at our school. And. Our winter sports just started up and our girls' basketball team won their last game and there's a game going on as we speak, so good luck to them. And our food drive is still going on and our coordinators have been hard at work collecting donations like money or food, like peanut butter and. All kinds of stuff, so if you are able to help and bring a donation in, that would be really awesome to. Help our families in need.
And how, how do people make either cash donations or food donations that maybe don't have a student at the school? Uh, you know.
I think.
You go into Porsche.
Yeah.
Yep, there you go, so you can just drop it off at the school and I know there is a link. I'll put it back out there again, the. One of the classes, I guess I don't know which one, made a really nice video for the food drive and the. With everyone in the community holding signs and stuff and, yeah, and at the bottom there's a link, but I can't remember what it is, but I'll see if I can find it during this meeting so that I can. Say, because I know I have it. Any other, so I wanna, I'm gonna be a little bit selfish and say thank you to Director Butler, my friend, Robert. I, many times I've looked at you and wondered how you do it, right, I mean, seven kids, you own a business, you were the school board president. Year after year, because when it was my year, I had, you know, spinal cord surgery and you stepped up and you did it again. Right, for another, for a second year and. It's a lot, this is not, I mean, you don't get any more, there's no prestige or more money or whatever to, to sit in this other chair, right? It's just more work and, and I. And it's been ten years and it was four and a half years ago that my chair was right up there in front of. Five board members, you know, as I sat there interviewing and holding. What?
Four board members.
Oh, what's, was Tom there?
No, because he resigned.
Oh, he was just sitting in the chair?
No.
Maybe I miscounted anyway.
Why was he there?
He was, I thought he was sitting there.
He was sitting there.
I don't, yeah. And it seemed like there was five of them.
That's not how it was supposed to be, but okay, nevermind.
But anyway, I, and, I mean, you've, you've been a mentor to me, just even as I try to figure this out, right? But then also just personally supporting me, my family, my husband, my children. As you mentioned, you're at the elementary school supporting reading, you're at the high school supporting football and, and. Parking lot chili cook-offs and, and all things Granite Falls and. We will miss you on this board, but I have no doubt we will see you everywhere, because that's just kind of who you are, so I appreciate your time and service, but. I don't think you're going far. We just might, yeah, you'll be right here. Though my report from Wasda, I kind of skipped around, I don't think I, I picked a real thread when I was there, I sort of just touching things that were interesting. And interestingly, there must have been several presentations on data, but I enjoyed the law conference and several of the. Kind of the presentations from the attorneys and from, you know, different representatives about what sort of is coming from the Supreme Court all the way down. That we could be looking for to somehow land in our district maybe in the next year or two, so that was kind of interesting, I don't really have any highlights from that. I took a lot of notes, but it's mostly about Supreme Court cases and I'm not sure this audience cares, so. Also being super honest, they haven't made a decision yet, so.
Same thing, so.
Yeah. But I went, I, I attended a session about, and. I can't remember the exact name of this, of the session, but it had to do with district improvement plans and it had to do with. High achieving districts and the correlation with their school boards, you know, and. And I'm listening, right, I've, I've seen the reports that the schools are bringing to us, I've seen the data that, that we've. Had thus far, I've seen the data from the state, from my ready. And. So I, I thought I have to show up to this particular session, right, what is a board doing in a district that's, that's really high performing and what can we do differently? Right, some of those things. That really, I mean, kind of the takeaway, I'll, I'll cut right to the chase, was that there's a strong correlation. Between school districts that perform well and school board meetings that, where the board spends fifty percent or more of the time discussing the data. So it's less PowerPoint slides of, of, you know, cute activities and, and wonderful things and more about. Driving toward the data and the data that supports what we're doing, where, what framework we're aligned to. How we're gonna get there and what we're doing in the day to day, it's not. It's not once a year. Presentation, right, it's every board meeting, every time, making progress, one percent at a time, one percent and readjusting. And there, they showed, and Dr. Middleton sat near me in that presentation and. And they showed, you know, study, I mean, these were peer reviewed studies, this just wasn't anecdotal data, this was, these were peer reviewed studies. Of time and again, when you're focusing on the data, when you're making those adjustments. When the board is looking at that and, and discussing policies and discussing financing, the, the things that are needed to get you there, right? When you're telling us what it is you need, because in fact, I'm gonna read this, because I wrote it down, I thought it was important, just for my own self. And I, I guess this is, this is what I wanted to say to all the presenters from now. From this Wasda forward, right, we want to ensure that we're having an honest, data focused conversation at this meeting. And future meetings and where we are today and trends over time and where we want to be and what are interventions and strategies that we tried and what works and what doesn't. Right, and how are we gonna get from where we are to where we want to be? Like, and we have to, and I wrote this, like, we have to have an honest conversation about blockers and things that you need to facilitate progress. Like, whether it's tools or support, training, policy updates, I mean, maybe there's a, there's a policy that we're just not aware that makes your job so difficult. You know, because you're navigating around something we don't realize is making everything. Super difficult or whatever, so maybe it's a policy update or procedure or something, but don't be shy, we need to improve, I can't look at those scores and think. Well, I sure hope somebody else takes care of that, right, it's us and we're up here and we're doing our best, but we need to have that communication. And, and for us, that's the data, right, we need to be able to see it so that we can see. How we can best support you, admittedly, we're on very tight funding, nobody's arguing that, so we really have to be very strategic in how we're spending those funds and. I want to spend those funds to support our students, that's my, that's, that's why I sit in this chair, so. Anyway, that was, I, I think it's very important for us to have the right people in the right places to, to get the success, right? And I support whatever we need to do to do that. And, yeah, so I guess I don't have the mug yet or the glass yet, but. But yeah, if you could ping me that link, that'd be good, anyway, so I, I just want to let you know that those things are very important and, and I heard the message. That the data was telling us, for you to be more successful, we need to see that in this meeting and have those conversations, so, thank you. Alright. And now we're on to district reports, three A, Dr. Middleton.
Which way, Corey? Let's see if I click on this. I'm gonna unplug. Try clicking this again. Try clicking it again for me.
Thank you.
So first, I just want to share that's, thank goodness for Wasda. It's, I, I was running on fumes, I think, and. To go and really get, being big rated by. Why we're here, that's for student learning, it was really at the right time and. Like I said, it's just me and Big Raid, my, my passion for moving our district or working with you, working with our admin team, and I want to thank our admin team for being here tonight, we're, we are talking. At sort of a high level today on those school improvement plans, they'll spend a lot of time when we get to their buildings on the specific things, but. I appreciate them coming tonight just to, to hear what you had to say about Wasda, to, for you to see and. Ask for commands myself or the principals on some of those things, but. Anyways, it was, it came at the right time. So a couple of my, my takeaways was Director Carey and. Director Beach and I had dinner one night with Professor from Gonzaga and. He's been looking at our data, it's sort of a. Thirty thousand foot level and. He, he sort of nailed a couple of key points, but I think one of the things that he said right away was, you know, if you really want to. Turn this around, the long-term investment is doing some literacy intervention for your three and five-year-olds. Well, we look at the strategic plan right behind you and number three is early learning, so we've made that commitment already. Now we need to do some action. Now we need to do some action and I'm not sure what that looks like. But it's not going to be a high dollar amount, but it is getting our district involved with young parents of. Two, three, four, five year olds and really pushing literacy. That's what's going to make some early. Investments so that when they get to kindergarten as um. As you know, Don and Patty would share with you is that. That gap is so wide. You have those who are already reading to those who haven't been read to. And so uh, that's, that's a key takeaway. The second uh, was we had that presentation by the student panel. Uh, from different districts and they spent about an hour talking to this room of. Two thousand or a thousand directors and how important it is to have on on your board. Students. And so Ava, thank you for stepping up this year. Thank you for going to WASTA, participating. And we really do want to hear your voice and we'll continue to ask um. Great, and I can visit and see if there might be a crossroads rep. We had one for a little while, but maybe we can get one up here again. And then the um, the session that Director Beach mentioned. Was for Board of Directors and it was what you do does matter um. And so they spent some time talking about those characteristics of low performing districts and high performing uh, districts and and. You know, have that relationship with with boards and how it's measured with the um. Highly functioning boards and successful boards is that self reflection tool that we took in the fall or that you took in the fall. And so I think we could do two things in January before Director Butler. Yeah, do something in January, February, a work session. Where one, we we do talk about the strategic plan again and making some modifications and drilling down a little bit on goal number two. Yes, it's important to have powerful teaching and learning, but how is that measured? What are the outcomes we're looking for? And then second, we do need to go through that uh, that assessment that that all of them took. So just some of those takeaways, but going back to um, that improvement. The the takeaway from the session that we were at was number one, goals are fine, you know, great, let's set these goals that we're going to have. But if you're not doing something different, it doesn't really matter. The 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 results are going to be the same. And that something is what those interventions are and those changes that or processes that you put in place. So it goes back to that, you know, results have little to do with goals. It has to do with what you're doing differently. What are you doing with your systems and processes? And so there are a couple of good graphs that that come out of this. So this this upward straight line. Yeah, that's what we want to see happen. Over time, our results get better. And if we're doing something. The reality is it's probably going to take a dip first and then go up. Because what's what's in this green, let me go back. What's in that green area between the two lines? It's called the valley of disappointment. But that's where all that work is. That's where the PLC work is. That's where. We're reminding our um, our instructors, okay, what is the standard that we're focused on? It's using our academic learning time. It's all of that. And then over time, all of a sudden, it just, it takes off. So we have to be realistic in our expectations. It's not going to be a, you know, straight up. But we're going to do that work and Dr. Manz is going to spend a few minutes talking about what that work is and then. That's what what happens. But here's my concern is. We could add another line and if we don't do anything, the results are going to stay down here. So same old thing. We'll get the same old results. So. I I think we are all saying the same thing tonight. We've got to be looking at our data. We've got to be saying, okay, if we're low in this area, what are we going to be doing differently in the future going forward? Well, and as I said, Dr. Manz is going to spend a bit of time on that. Okay, um, before shifting gear, well, I'll shift gears and talk about a couple of other. Other items here. I want to talk about food drive for just a minute. Um. Mister Dwyer and Sullivan reached out to the office today. And they wanted to ex- extend an invitation to the board. Uh, for deliveries and those are occurring on December fourteenth and fifteenth between eight and four thirty P M. So if you would like to be involved in deliveries, um, just you can reach out to me or Melanie or directly to um, Eric or Trudy. Uh, you're also invited, um, if you want to participate in the shopping experience, which is Saturday at the Mary's Bowl Fred Meyer. From eight to twelve. So that's when they go and spend tens of thousands of dollars uh, from donations, getting the food for the deliveries. And then the last part, which is no surprise, because I know. A lot of charitable organizations are experiencing a bit of a um, cash crunch this year with inflation and things being so tight. They're a little bit shorter this year. They're about five to six thousand dollars short in cash donations compared to other years. And they also have a a higher need for food. So um, Ava had mentioned earlier the. The opportunity for donations in either uh, monetary or in food. So uh, want to keep that in mind for the board as well as for those who are watching. And again, feel free to email either Eric or Trudy if you want to participate or have questions. Of course, you can contact me or Melanie as well. Um, so with a board resignation, just really quickly, once uh, that intention. Once the Director Butler writes something to us, uh, then at that that meeting. Um, after we get that that piece of paper, it's formally accepted. And that's when the time that the clock starts, so ninety days from that point on. And in our board policy and procedure, we post those openings. We we send out what the expectations are for uh, for Board of Directors. Uh, we ask for a letter of interest describing that person's qualifications and desire and reason for wanting to serve. It comes down to uh, interviews with multiple candidates. We would uh, have have those interviews in open session. And then that new board member gets sworn in. And so uh, it's just really be mindful of that clock because if we don't. Pick someone within those ninety days, then the uh, Northwest Educational Service District does that for us. I'll just say uh, you know, Director Butler, I'll have more to to share maybe at your your last meeting, but um. You know, Director Butler has been uh, just a a wonderful member of the Board of Directors um. Having worked in a number of districts. It's uh, it's it's so important to have an important board that you work with closely. Um, you know, I serve as the agent of the board, yes, you know, it's, it really is, uh, you know, the six of us as we. We uh, help lead this this uh, this district. Um. When I think of uh, of Robert Butler, though, the words that come to mind are servant leader. Uh, it's actually could be in the dictionary because he is truly a servant leader and. I just appreciate him and I've appreciated his his friendship even more and I know uh, he might be leaving the. Might be leaving the board, but you know, the friendship goes on forever. And he's gotten a P D, so I'd be calling me dad a couple of times and uh. We still uh, just appreciate the person that he is. Um. Yeah, the final thing I'll I'll say about Director Butler is, uh, as you know, last week I was. Uh, I was pretty sick. Um, and of course, we had a lot of snow and we have a great early morning snow crew that goes out and. I go out and drive and Monday and Tuesday I went out and drove and I'm struggling on Tuesday morning, but get out there. Uh, Tuesday night I called Robert because he always says, hey, if you need someone to drive, I'm always up at that time. I'd be happy to. And it was without. A second thought. He said, of course I will. Yes, I'll, I can do that for you. And I just appreciated that and I feel like that was. One thing off my mind and allowed my myself to feel a little bit better. So. That's just one example of that servant leadership that uh, that he brings. There's so many more. And uh, I know Director Butler, that's one of our key roles, the takeaway with early learning literacy. I see that could be a big role that we could partner with you as a. As a citizen. So thank you for all that you've done. Questions or comments?
Um, safety, anything on safety, uh, as per?
Um, you know, I, Joe, we did have our our monthly meeting with uh, the city today and um. Uh, I did have a chance to visit with uh, our our chief and. We we have some things that we want to look at specifically at at the middle school, uh, especially when you have and. Within uh, within the campus in a uh, an outbuilding that has. Doors, but your perimeter is secure. So we are working on some things there. Um, and we've also. Have tasked uh, Dion to be looking for some, some different type of. Escape gates because right now with the secure perimeter, um, you know, if something were to happen. You know, kids are going out, but it would take someone to unlock one of the rolling uh, gates and roll that away and then. Then get out. There are gates similar to the ones at the stadium that we want to install. Uh, specifically at the middle school so that, you know, if we need to go out for some uh. You know, for some reason, they could just push right out.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Middleton? I just have a comment. I found the website for the food drive. It is G F S D, Granite Falls School District, fooddrive.com. Oh, that is where you go to uh. Make donations or find out more information. I knew I had it. All right. Item three B, the non discrimination and affirmative action procedure fifty ten update. Prepared by Jennifer Harmon.
Good evening. I didn't have a presentation um, for this procedure update, um, but if you had any questions, I can certainly. Also, any questions that we can, that we'll make. Uh, we'll point out that the procedure um, had goals that were. Set for twenty fifteen, so it does need to be relooked at as a board, as a district. The goal that are in that procedure.
So do you have, so to discuss the procedure, so you did not update the procedure?
I did, with current data, um, current um, breakdown of staff by um, race, by sex.
Okay.
Our student numbers. So all the data that's in there is current data as of November twenty twenty three.
Okay. Uh, or do you have questions?
I I have a couple of, I don't want to jump in front of anyone else. Um, but I guess I know, um, so other than um, the changes, everything else basically is remaining the same. Right? The language, the all the other stuff. Um, Dr. M, just out of curiosity, who it says, um, who is our compliance officer? Is that Jennifer? Um, your designee, um, it says uh. Has given the compliance officer the direct responsibility, ensure the Granite Falls School District is compliant with affirmative actions and that's delegates him her. There's something like an appointing affirmative action committee consisting of a compliance officer. So we use compliance officer. A couple of times in that, but I think they're separate people. And and the reason why I say that it says the has given the. Super T's designee is appointed as a compliance officer. So who's you, who's your designate?
That's that's Beth. Beth wears a lot of different hats.
Okay.
Uh, when it comes to Title Nine Compliance O C R, et cetera.
So then it says that um, that that compliance officer in assuring is going to appoint an affirmative action committee consisting of a compliance officer. So is that the same compliance officer or is that a different compliance officer?
I have some more points.
Yeah, I I I think it all sort of rests with uh, with Beth.
Okay.
And uh.
And and I actually thought that's might what you say. So there the the only change I thought is maybe we say. Beth's name and, you know, a compliance officer in the district. You know, or a title or something along those lines and then say everything else and Beth can, you know, decide who that is. Just to maybe make it ease of kind of understanding. As well as, you know, potentially a parent wanting to contact someone or or something along those lines, at least they know directly who to go to. Um, I know this is a final, um, but I I. Thought that maybe that was something that we could throw in there and I know we look at this often. Sorry for never quite processing that.
We can certainly move it up. I know under resources, we can have district contactus. That knows itself, probably the second to the last page.
Okay.
We could designate that earlier and we're clearly, and being procedure, it's. That's for us to to clean up.
And correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm reading it wrong because I'm seeing those as potentially two people, separate people or potentially the same person, right? Where she, because it could, if if it's the same person, if it's compliance officer and it has to be both of those, then maybe it's okay the way it is. But it seems a little convoluted in the way that it's written, just. You're reading it.
She has any other comments?
I know.
Okay, so um. I obviously I picked up on the fact that it said our goal was from twenty fifteen and I noticed that it was titled final. So I hesitate to accept it as a final tonight if our goals are marked as twenty fifteen.
That was just my, I'm sorry, I did not edit this when I saved it. That was just in my folders so that I knew that was the one that was sent to me. That wouldn't be final for you as the board.
Okay.
This was my, maybe. Attracting it in my focus.
The clerker, this is a procedure, right?
Right.
So we don't have any action on it, do we?
I hope not. Um.
Yeah.
So under four A, let me go back to it. So now I have, still have the wrong glasses like I do most board meetings. Um, or sorry, A four. So it says a representative from the community and is responsible for the following, but I feel like. There should be a space right there that makes a big difference, that it's not just the community member that's responsible for all those things underneath, but it's the. It's the set of all those representatives that is. Responsible for that thing, right? So I, though it's only one enter on A four. Um, I think it. It changes the meaning anyway. Other than that, I have a couple of things and then. I don't know how to ask this question, but there's certain callouts of certain um. Disability information and the numbers are very, very low in there and I'm curious if we're supposed to. Are we okay to publish that data when the number is one? Because it's medical information. I don't know. That's my question to you. Are we?
We don't share with anyone who has a disability who might have a five oh four as an employee. Um.
It's it's pretty specific. I bet I could figure it out within three questions. So it just made me nervous that we. Would publish the number one in relationship to anybody or any. Any person and their medical, whatever. I just want to be real careful about. What a responsibility to protect that kind of information is so that it. I mean, you're not putting their name out there, but you're giving it categorization and a number, right? And some additional information that could. Inadvertently revealed.
How about if we get ahold of Abigail from?
Yeah, I don't know the answer, but I just want to be sure because if we shouldn't be publishing it, let's, let's not. If we're okay to publish it, then cool. But I appreciate you asking the question. Okay.
I I got just one thing because I I guess until Director Butler said that, I didn't realize that this was a procedure, not a policy. Um, because the title of the of the item was board policy fifty ten, but I I should have seen the P. So um, I didn't realize that this this was that. So. I guess, Dr. M, it was the intent just to make us aware because, you know, obviously Director Butler is right. We don't. I guess, Dr. M, it was the intent just to make us aware, because you know, obviously Director Butler is right. We don't, we don't review procedure. We, we do policy. So is the intent just for us to be in the know? Is that why it's on the?
That's correct.
Okay. So. There's no action that we need to make as far as just understanding, voicing our. Recommended changes. And then it's really up to you and the admin team to, to do that then. Okay. I just wanted to be clear. Bringing that to my attention.
We had talked about a meeting or two ago that gave all the policies, but we never see the procedures. So we talked about.
Oh, yeah. And I don't mean, we just suggest them.
And I do appreciate you bringing this to us, especially because we just attended this big conference and. And the title of the conference was belonging, right? So procedure that points to. Data of this quality is important for us to know and, and keep at the front of our mind when us went. Listen to the, listen to the experts. So it's good to know. Thank you. Any other questions, board? Thank you. Right, so I've clicked off my agenda. Oh, the staffing. You're next to for. Or no? Prepared by Beth Mills, the Student Services Follow Up and Staffing Report. Are you on this one too?
Yes, she, so Beth and I did together. So when we talked about the last meeting. You know, there's some concern over how some of our classified. Numbers were increasing significantly. So we took some data from twenty fifteen through to present twenty one, twenty two school year. With our enrollment data, which is in the blue. Our certificated FTE and our classified FTE. And as you can see, we're trending. Up in enrollment and, and classified and certificated staffing is following that, which would be a natural progression. I know some areas are larger, which will let's go, go into some of the Paris, but just kind of. I, I guess it's reassuring and not because it costs more money, but just kind of a visual addition that. We're moving in kind of the same direction. And some clarification about procedure being presented today, that's also part of our assuring educational equity. The procedure is in the zeros. That we're gonna like on a regular basis present. And so. Yeah, okay. Alright. So in October, I presented to the school board some data. About special education and some of the questions that I got were. Hey, can we please take a look at some of the surrounding school districts so we can see how our data compares? And so what I have here is some data from some of the smaller-ish. The homeish districts and then we also pulled in Meridian, which is in Watton County, but. They're similar in size and demographics to us. So a nice selection here of districts to look at. You will recall that we looked at the October one special ed numbers. And I'm just going to point out a few things. I'm sure there's going to be questions about this data. One of the things about analyzing data is that it often. Then makes us ask even more questions, right? So I'm, I'm sure there will be questions. Some that I may not be able to answer tonight, and I may need to do a deeper dive into this data if that's the way the questions go. So you can see the special education percentage. Interesting to note is that only one of the districts on this list is under the thirteen point five percent cap. And so, so most of these districts. Are probably submitting for Community Impact Safety Net because they're not getting funding. As you recall that. Over thirteen point five percent, we don't get the special ed funds for those funding for those students. Other things to note are, it seems that most of the districts, and sometimes it's hard because the numbers aren't all exact. Seem to be operating with much fewer Paris than we are. The one that I would say is an exception to that is Meridian. And my wondering. Is look at their LRE data. So they're eighty to one hundred percent. Percentage is sixty eight percent. And my wondering is. They, they have a comparable proportion of para educators. So they have two hundred and eleven special ed. Students, twenty seven paras, we have four hundred and twenty and fifty. But the LRE is quite significantly different. So are they using those paras? To support those students in the general education setting is a wondering that I have. So. So that's that. And then Director Beach had specifically asked me. About my plan moving forward. And I do have some documents that I've created. That I can share with you if you'd like, but I just did some of the bullet points. Of the plan to address that because it does seem to be something we need to look at. And we've already had, I've already had one focus group and some of the other ones are being scheduled. Talking to both certificate and certificated and classified special education staff. To look at this data. And already we've. We've had some interesting responses in terms of some folks thinking of. Some possible reasons for our data and just some interesting dynamics. That, that they were expressing. So then I want to talk to the staff while I'm working on, on the plan to get their input. To help us guide, guide the plan. But I have been putting together some case manager guidance materials around. Making staffing requests and creating a process because really we haven't had a formalized process. And so something that is in writing so that people know this is the process that you need to go through when making that request. And so we'll then. Train the case managers on that process. And then part of that will be, the independence plans will need to be a part of. That process. So. Not our classroom paras, but when we do assign an adult to a student. And we have some students that we know are going to have someone with them. For life. They've got some significant medical issues, but if it's for our behavior issue, for example. Or a student's not able to be independent. That right from the get go, that we need to be working on what that independence plan or FATE plan is. And then. Finally, we have a presenter and I mentioned this in October. Who did present to staff at one of our buildings last year. And he's very dynamic and has lots of great ideas and resources to promote independence. So we're going to bring him back and have him hopefully. Be able to talk to all of our classified and certificated special education staff. So I'm going to take notes on any questions that you have.
Who wants to go first?
I have both mine and Director Ladue, but he sent the, his stuff ahead of time.
Why don't you go ahead first?
Okay, sure. So I know that Director Ladue said that he sent it and I think it, it got there a little after, but. He had some questions. He did some analysis, but the deck from. October nineteenth isn't up there, which, so I guess he did some analysis. If we'll go back to the numbers that you had for the sped numbers. Yeah, so he was kind of looking at. I'm going to take my glasses off and just sit closer so I can finally see it. Alright. So he was looking at those numbers and he sort of calculated the averages and the state, the, our deviations for our district. And he said, the ratios show that Granite sped teachers are able to handle. One tenth more of a student than the average of other districts. And our paras are handling two point five five fewer children than the other districts. Average plural districts, plural averages. And six point four children less when compared to Sultan. And he's, he just said that the two point five five. Fewer, so two and a half students per ser- serviced per para caught his attention. Because he was saying if our district, and, and I did not check his numbers, I'm just making his comments. He's, he asked, if our district was even. At the average of the others, then we would have thirty eight or thirty nine paras. So he just asked for some more clarity around. Around kind of those numbers, right? The. The averages of two and a half students less per para average. And maybe roughly eleven or twelve. Parents more than any of the others that he was saying. So then he said. I think, so he was curious about the target ratios. What are the target ratios, assuming that they should be in line with what he calculated? But what are your target ratios for? Those same.
We don't have, we don't have target ratios, but seeing this, I think makes us. Need to look at and question. And work on that plan. And I think. A goal. Uh, to get to needs to be a part of that.
Okay. And then he wanted, he asked, and, and maybe you saw this, I'm not sure what he said in the message he wrote to you because I wasn't on it.
He wrote to Josh, Josh forwarded it to me, so.
Okay, so the timeline for the targets. And how they, we decided, you know, similar district, state standards, however, we decided that. And then the process in place to ensure students are getting the proper care, not just the fastest solution. Or the one that sounds the best on, on the surface, right? So those are kind of his things. And I don't know if that was in the note you got, but if it wasn't, I'd be happy to forward this to you or if you just wrote down. If you took these notes today. So those were Director Ladue's questions about the data that was. In the packet. And then my questions are similar. There, there, I, I guess I thought that what you were presenting today was a little bit different. So maybe we should take this offline, but just for the record, I'll ask the questions, but I don't expect that you brought the answers with you tonight. So. Let's see. So. What we talked about last time is that there was a twenty FTE increase in the paras. And. We were going to seek to understand that. We talked about possibly just understanding the categories that they're in because. It very well could be that that number is the justified acceptable number for our district and it's, it is as it should be. But all we saw was one number in a box and just want to seek to understand what that means is that. Because there's one on ones is how many are one on ones, how many are behavior classroom? I don't even know how you would break that out. So I'm kind of leaning on you to help me understand what the one number in a box really, really means.
So I can dig into our numbers and flesh out which are classroom paras and the one ones. Would you like me to reach back out to the?
No, I'm, I think it was just more to try and understand our number and our box, right? What are, what are we doing here? Like what school, what are they doing? I, I don't know the answer, right?
By category by school.
Yeah, and then you had shown it was a table. I have it here, but of course I don't have a way to project it, but. You showed a table that had the grad, the regular four year graduate ration. Rate, I could say that higher education, thirty five day initial evaluation timeline and eighty to one hundred general education was on the table. And then our Granite Falls numbers, percentages, and then the state numbers. And. I guess what I was seeking to understand there is. We're about, let's see. We're. How do I write this? I guess I don't even, oh, okay. So we're about ten percent below the average for graduate graduation rate. But one of them that, it just stuck with me is we're missing that thirty five day initial evaluation. By six point seven percent. So every one of those misses is a student waiting greater than thirty five days for just the initial evaluation. So I'd like to understand. Understand that number or understand what we need to do or what needs to happen to support us getting to the goal, right? Just like I said at the beginning of the meeting. We need to have an honest conversation about this, right? Like what is happening and what needs to happen?
I can answer that one.
Okay.
That was last year and we had all virtual school psychologists. And that was, that impacted us greatly. And we have. Three preschool psychologists, one is part time and she is virtual, but as of right now, we're on target to have all of our. Initial evaluations completed within thirty five days.
Like a hundred percent, you feel like?
One hundred percent right now.
And do, do we only track it once a year? Is that why we didn't realize we were missing it? Or does it get tracked like monthly? Like how do we know that we're still on track?
We haven't had. A late. The only late evaluations we have had this year were students that moved into the district with expired.
Okay.
That we weren't able to get done. In order to count on any given month. As of right now. And yeah, I mean, we're small enough that we can track and we have those conversations.
Okay, so you know somehow you're tracking somehow that we're hitting it.
Yeah. Running lists.
Okay. And then help me understand, because I heard you say LRE. Tell me what that means.
It's restrictive environment.
And eighty to one hundred percent sure education, I'm assuming means that they're not in a self-contained classroom. Or, or something. Help me understand what that means.
Means that they are spending eighty to one hundred percent of their day in the general education setting.
Okay, and we're at fifty one. I guess the numbers changed just a little bit. It was at fifty one point six before. It's fifty one point three, whatever. So. To, help me understand, does that mean fifty one percent of our special education students are? In general education?
Less than, less than eighty percent.
Less than eighty percent of the time.
Yeah.
So more than half of our students spend not enough time, not eighty percent of time.
Yes. And look, we're not the worst.
How do I, how do I know that well? How do I? But how do I know? How do I say this? How do I know if fifty one percent is the right number? Does it, is that, I mean, it doesn't seem.
Can I just ask a question real quick? Because you, you just completely changed my understanding of that number. So I just want to make sure that I understand it. You just blew my mind. So are we saying that fifty one percent of our students, not of the four hundred and twenty or the entire. Student population of, of Granite Falls School District. Is in general at eighty to one hundred percent of the time and the resulting obviously forty eight point seven. Is in, is less than eighty percent? Or are you saying fifty one percent of the four hundred and twenty? Are in general education eighty to one hundred percent of the time, meaning that. Forty nine percent or forty eight and some change of the four twenty is in less than that.
Four twenty.
Okay, so fifty one, I'm just going to repeat it to make sure I understand.
I gotta type this down.
So fifty one, fifty one point three percent of four hundred and twenty students. Are in general education eighty to one hundred percent of the time. So. Then forty eight percent of the four twenty are in general education, less than that, somewhere between seventy nine to less. Okay.
Each, each IEP team makes those decisions. And I, I shared in October that. This has been a, a pretty big push by the state. I'm not sure if I shared that several years ago, and I don't have the current data. But several years ago, Washington State was. Forty fourth out of fifty states on this data. I think I did share that four years ago, we were about the same as the state and the state is now at sixty percent. So they're looking at us to come up with. Ways to improve that. And we would like to. To move forward on that.
So realistically, what would be? A target goal for our district?
Well, the state average sixty, so I would say that we.
That makes us a C student. We just, we're shooting for a C. No, I, I'm, I really am interested in that because. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna ask maybe two questions more about that fifty one. So. Forty-ish, nine-ish percent of the students are not in general education. They're in. Not general education per the district. Not general education per the decision of their I E P team.
Right, and it might be that they are in general education seventy nine percent. It might be that they're in general education thirty nine.
Do we have anybody that reviews those, or do they only get reviewed once a year, once every two years, whatever? How often is that, that decision by the team reviewed?
Annually. Sometimes more, but always.
I'll tell you that forty nine percent is surprising. That, that seems surprising. But I.
Surprisingly, it should be lower or higher, just trying to figure out.
If the goal that we've been given from the federal level is eighty to one hundred percent. Uh, feels like that's the goal is eighty to one hundred percent, am I right?
No, what she's, the goal from the state is sixty percent of your sped.
That's not the goal, it's the average, the feds are saying eighty to one hundred percent.
The feds, I don't, I don't actually know what the feds are saying should be our goal and I can look that up, um.
I'm just curious, because it feels like if our students are forty nine percent not in general education. Are we hitting our belonging targets? Uh, I'm just, it's still ringing back here, right? Forty nine percent aren't hitting their eighty to one hundred percent gen ed, are we? Are we doing a disservice when it comes to belonging? I don't, like I said, I don't expect that you have the answer. But I wanna, I mean, I do want an answer, but I don't expect it right second. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to ask the questions, appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I've got some, so just, I, I guess I just wanna take a, 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 a big step back just for a second, just so. So, you know, m- m- my questioning of this is really aligned, um, to our data focus and I certainly don't want. I said before, I'll say it again, certainly not hunting to figure out how the way that we squeeze paras out. Or, or, or anything, my, my goal is, as I said earlier in my comments, to make sure that we've got the right people in the right places. And as far as I'm concerned, we should do that in every area of our organization. To make sure that we're serving students as absolutely best as we can, this is just first. Obviously, we have to follow the requirements of an I E P. Hundred percent, I, I say that we probably, we, that should absolutely be our focus, so. Not looking to, to cutting positions or anything like that, I guess. But the data, and this is again, horns data, a- and, um, Dr. Melis is kind of, as you're saying this. It kind of tells an interesting story. Um, and so my questions are just based upon the, the, the differences in the data as we, as we're comparing to other districts. And I appreciate you providing this. So, um, just so that if anyone's following along online, just so that they know what we're talking about, cause I don't know if you got any detail. A ten to one sped, we just talked about that, what is the definition of a ten to one sped?
That was October first.
Okay, um, so that's the date, um, uh, ten one, so as of ten one, that's our number and that's our percentage. Our teachers that specifically sped teachers, right? And then specifically paras. Does that number include R B Ts, does include everyone who's considered quote unquote a para, or I guess how'd you get the, the para columns?
Those that are, um, uh, paid for through special education.
Okay, so are R B Ts in that too, or?
A few R B Ts, yeah.
Okay, and they're in that fifty number is what I'm saying, okay. And, and the reason I'm asking that specific question is, as I said last. Um, a, uh, a response behavior tech, behavior technician, sorry, thank you. And then other staff, what is, what does other staff entail?
Those are related service staffs or school psychologists or, um, speech language pathologists or speech language pathology assistants. For occupational therapists, physical therapists, um, et cetera.
Okay, and then eighty to one hundred percent, as you explained before, we'll necessarily go into it, is kind of. The goal to have sped students, you know, at least eighty percent in, in a general education environment, right?
Right, and I will look to see if we have guidance from the state or the federal government about what our target should be.
Okay. And then in, in still, and just taking a step back, um, you, you made a very valid point and I, I just wanna make sure that we are in response to. Uh, the sped percentages and kind of the arbitrary number that the state stats with funding of thirteen point five percent. And the fact that almost every single district here is above that thirteen point five percent, again, for anyone following. On video, so essentially what that means is, is that. Uh, the district either out there funds levies or, or some other ways pays the cost for that additional, in our case. Um, was that eight point five percent? Um, there are, uh, we can petition to safety net. Uh, for safety net funds, additional funds at the end of the year. Um, at least sometime I've been here, we've never gotten what we've asked for. Um, uh, it, it, it's denied or for a number of reasons, or we get some sort of percentage, but essentially. Uh, the great community that we have here fits the bill for this. Uh, we have to pay upfront and hope that we get as much reimbursement as we possibly can, so there's a significant issue there. Um, and I, I have spoken to, uh, I had, uh, dinner with our incoming legislative representative, Sam Low. Um, and this was one of the main topics that I talked to about him was the need to remove this thirteen point five percent cap. Um, and, uh, uh, how it was arbitrarily set, how it significantly hurts smaller districts like ourselves. And, uh, he seemed amenable to that, uh, I could also say that, uh, WASDA. Uh, one of its legislative priorities this year is also, uh, to have, uh, this arbitrary thirteen point five percent removed, so. I'm extremely hopeful, optimistic, uh, that something will be done, uh, this legislative session on it and, you know, certainly will. Um, you know, as much as we can do to continue that drumbeat of, of something needing to be done on this is, is gonna help us in the end. So I, I just wanted to make sure I said that. So, um, along the same lines as, as, uh, Director Veach, I guess I, I have some questions that I don't necessarily expect you to answer tonight. So don't feel like you have to, I, I, um, but you know, it is, I guess, striking to me. Um, you know, maybe I shouldn't, but I, I always compare things to Sultan. Um, just because they are, you know, very similar for our districts in a lot of ways, and I guess it certainly is striking to me that. That we have over, you know, relative, there, there's, you know, uh, what is it? Eighty or so different, uh, eighty or so, uh, greater, um, increase in ten, in, in our sped number. Um, but we have twice, uh, and that eighty percent represents, let's say, sixty, I'm doing quick math, let's say about thirty percent. More, uh, than they have in sped students, but we have over a hundred percent more of paras. Um, uh, so I guess that, that, the percentage of that is striking, again, if that's I E Ps or something like that, it is what it is. But I guess I'm looking for more information on why that is, that's, that's certainly interesting, seems like an anomaly to me. Um, uh. E- especially when compared, when you look at, you know, kind of the other data, it kind of tracks. We, they have thirteen teachers, we have seventeen point nine, basically eighteen, right? That, that kind of tracks along with those percentage differences. Uh, they have nine point seven other staff, we have eleven point seven, again, that kind of tracks with that thirty percent difference. But to have over a hundred percent more on paras, you know, is an anomaly, so I'd, I'd love to hear more about that. Um, uh, uh, the other is, um. And, and part of the answer, by the, uh, we talked about this last time, I had this, I've had this conversation with Marshall. Maybe they classify their paras as different, I know that that's kind of a thing, that, you know, paras is kind of a wide statement, so, you know, maybe there's something there. And if that's the case, then let's talk about that, uh, and, and dive into it a little bit deeper. Um, just to echo Director Veach's point, I, I'd love to hear for us to, you know, have a goal. Uh, for that eighty to a hundred percent. Um, but also I would like for us to have a conversation about how, um. What, uh, what we're doing, I said this last time, we talked about this, what we're doing to, um, uh, to. Catch these students up if possible with their, uh, with their other aged, school-aged, um, uh, students. To try to transition them out of sped, um, to, uh, you know, to try to get them to where they need to be, what interventions? You know, what our goal is there for, what that looks like, you know, kind of more into, you know, and then even more so. And this was a big part of our conversation with, um, the, the professor from Gonzaga, the school psych professor. What are we doing as from an intervention standpoint, early on to, uh. With kids that clearly data, I ready data showing that that is their trajectory, that they are lagging. Uh, what interventions that we're doing and what successes and, and do we need to do to specifically? Um, change the trajectory of them heading into, uh, into sped. Um, uh, from one of the, the key points that he made that was really shocking to me. Um, and I, I hope I don't say it, is that the data shows that really in third and fourth grade. If significant interventions aren't put in place there, uh, then the die has been kind of set, right? That they are, uh, to a certain extent, that that is kind of where they're headed. Uh, and that we need to do some significant, the data shows that we need to do some significant, specific, targeted, focused interventions. Uh, in third and fourth grade. Again, you don't necessarily have to answer it now, but I, I don't feel like we're doing that to a large part. I feel like we're looking more towards middle school as doing that. Which, you know, based upon what you're saying is, you know, in a lot of cases, I never want to use the term too late, but is later in, in the game. Uh, then we certainly should. Um, and then I guess I, I also outside of that holistically, would like to have a conversation about. What specifically are we do, what are the school psychs doing as far as interventions? Um, with students, you know, uh, holistically, like are we, you know, are, are we scheduling, you know? In, uh, uh, a focused time specifically on goal-based, um, uh, standards? What I mean by that is, hey, you know, the I ready data shows this student is having a, a trouble in reading. So focused, we're, we're going, we're doing a pullout, we're focusing on, you know, this specific, uh, to get the student with this specific metric, okay? And then we're, we're pulling back out and that pullout time isn't necessarily interruptive to the, to the larger, to the other areas, so creating holes academically there. So I, I, the heart, I guess of what I'm saying is, I'd like to get a lot more deeper into this, into the data, into the interventions, is the kind of things that I'm saying there. So that we can kind of understand, uh, where we're at and where we're going. Like I said, this isn't, and it's something I wanna do in this area, I'd love to get into the weeds of this, uh, in all of our areas. And Dr. M, you can feel free to tell me if you think I'm headed in the wrong direction, um, but I, I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, that's, uh, your, your, uh, discussion is really. Some related to this chart, um, but I think it also goes into a lot of other. Uh, to our general ad as well, and, and I, you know, and what? What the professor was saying was basically if you're not doing some interventions, some strong interventions by third, fourth grade. They're a struggling reader, in fourth grade, they're gonna be a struggling reader through their, their school career and into life. And so we really owe it to them, and so let's go back to that early literacy intervention we should be investing in. And then, as we say, the, the work that we're doing at our early elementary is important.
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna belabor that point, Dr. M, thank you for saying that, but that was, I think that was the part that like literally shook me is that, you know. For the rest of their academic career, right? The cat, the die is almost cast at that point, right? And, and again, I, I don't know if we're, if we're leaning in to those really hard in that third and fourth grade, so we need to pivot, right? Again, spending money in the right place, making sure we have people in the right place. I think we need to pivot more to look more to the, to, to, uh, that grade level to make sure that we're really intentionally doing that. I didn't realize, this is my fault, I didn't realize how intricate school psychs are to the, um, uh. To really diving into this data, so that was the other piece, thank you for reminding me. Is, I, I, Beth, I'd, I'd love to learn more is how deeply are our school psychs that we now have that aren't telling? Looking at the I ready data, evaluating the I data, uh, you know, looking at trending metrics, interventions, all of that stuff. Um, so I, I know that's a lot and it's more than you could talk about in a comeback meeting, but, um, but just to get it out there, those are the things I'd like to talk about.
Yes, um, I, well, I, he kind of asked a question that I had, which was about the other staff, um. And so that was answered, I kind of have more of a comment, which I said before, and I'll say it again, but we're looking at. These charts and we're looking at these numbers and everybody's always concerned about that fifty there where the pairs are. What they're doing, I would like to see your breakdown of where to the pairs are, but. My challenge is to anybody who's looking at this data and so focused on these charts. To go to the schools, observe, walk the halls, better yet, volunteer, substitute teach. Hang out in the resource room and most importantly, talk to the paras and ask them questions. Because that is going to give more insight on why we have fifty. Um. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, that's my focus group with the staff has one, has part of the plan.
Sorry.
I, I, I guess just one, just one follow up. Um, Director Kincaid, cause I've, I've heard you say that a couple of times, but I guess the part where I scratched my head is, 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 are you, are you saying that? The kids in Granite Falls are unique in their needs of paras and, and of supports? More unique than any other district that we're looking at, because that's what I'm talking, I, I would.
Can I, can I be open and candid with you? As, as well. As someone who has substituted in. But five to six now surrounding districts, yes, we are unique.
So there's something different about the boundaries of Granite Falls School District that's different than any other district?
I can't, I, I.
I'm just asking for clarification.
From my observation, yes, do I know what that is? Absolutely not, but yes, we are different.
So it's like something in the water?
I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know, but we are different.
Okay, well, yes, I've never processed us being different, so quote unquote, but, uh, um.
That's just my ob- my observation from being in classrooms in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. Um, actually, I've, I've been in middle school also, but that's my observation, as we are a bit different, um.
Not a bit significantly.
Well, yeah. Yeah.
Any more questions?
Hi, so now I have two because they were talking, but it's not on this slide, so you'll be happy to know that. If you wanna go to the end, like, each should be quick, I think these are yes, no questions. Um. Does fade plan mean independence somehow? Thought I figured that out, so fade is an acronym for something?
No, I used fade in a slide, um, but I prefer independence.
Oh, okay.
Because really, um, that's our goal.
Okay.
Students, and so as we're fading the para, we would be creating independence.
Ah, okay, I got you. So then my question I wrote down when you were speaking, cause I actually did write this down back then, but, um. You said we're creating processes for, oh, staffing request processes, so, um. Have those been finalized or when will they be finalized? Do we?
Well, they're in draft form, but I'm doing the focus groups first.
See, now there's that, that's my final question, so you mentioned. Uh, the words interesting dynamics and possible things that are pointed to in that first focus group. Uh. Are there anything that rose right to the top that like as the director, you're like, huh?
Yes.
So can you tell us what some of like, I mean, what were some of that kind of low hanging fruit or whatever that you see there?
I'm gonna wanna have that conversation offline.
Oh, okay, all right, I, I was hoping, I didn't know what it was, so, okay, that's fair. All right, really, that really was my question, but I did write those questions down when you were on that slide, okay? Any other questions?
I just saved my comment for last, um, so I, I, I too have been working in the schools, Director Kincaid, and I've seen the pairs in action and. I, I just, I wanna make sure this, as we go through this, and I think it's right thing to do to inspect everything, I mean, it's not a wrong process going through. I wanna make sure it's very clear that this has no reflection whatsoever on performance. Or ability, this is all just like, we've gotta be good stewards and look at everything. And I'm, I, I would not be surprised if the answer is, but it's the right number. I'm just saying, we've gotta look at it to be good stewards, so to make sure the message doesn't get out that there's a way, no, we're just being good stewards, we're doing our job. Um, and, and I, I, I know that's the heart of everyone on this board, I just wanna say it out loud, so that that's out there.
Thank you.
Um, so that's it, and, and I, I do agree, I mean. Maybe we are different, I don't know, but that's, that's why we're doing this process, so I really appreciate that.
All right, thank you. Bring the business report prepared by Marshall Cruz.
I almost crashed into the grocery store at that.
So I was just gonna point out a couple of slides and, and, uh, take questions, but before we, before I wanted to piggyback on Beth's presentation a little bit, just for a second, and. The, one of the biggest facts that we can take away to Carl, talk about special ed funding is broken, it is completely broken, we have to. Scrape for all. Spend hundreds of hours, probably thousands. Spend hundreds of hours, probably thousands of hours a year to get safety net for. That was six percent of students that are not funded by the state, and all that work that we do, we get about nine hundred thousand dollars of safety net. If all the state did was remove the cap, we'd get one point four million dollars. For us doing nothing but servicing the kids. So and we'd get that as we spent the money, wouldn't have to wait until August to get August, September to get the money. We get it every month. And it'd be five hundred thousand dollars more than what we have to. Just crawl, beg, plead, go through committees for, spend hundreds of hours just to get money that we've already spent. So if we had, if the cap was removed, which I know it's something they're talking about. We would have much more resources to support those kids. I mean, then. The conversation, whether those kids belong where they belong, but. At least don't punish us for having a different ratio of special ed kids in other districts. Anyway, that's why I'm saying that.
So a a a different ratio you arbitrarily made up.
Right, exactly.
I mean, it's not just the different ratio than the norm, it's the number they've just made up, right, Carl?
Arbitrary, completely.
And if the if the reason for it is because at some point in the distant past, districts are using that to generate revenue. Well, audit districts better, but don't punish the ones that actually have the need. And that's what I feel like we're being, we're being punished because we have the need. We're having to beg for money at the end of the year to pay ourselves back. So this year I added a few slides to the physical presentation. There's a. A revenue projection, there's a expenditure projection, it's kind of a forward looking slide that talks about some. Bigger things that are going on the next thirty, sixty, ninety days. So I just want to bring those couple of slides to your attention and. The big thing coming up is that in January, we'll get our enrollment true up, where our actual enrollment. Is then generates our real revenue for the year rather than our budgeted revenue. And we'll have a much better idea of how on target we are, but we look on target right now to to hit our goal. Revenue's a little higher than what we're expecting, expenditures are maybe a little bit lower. We're off this month because we had some front loaded expenditures we had to spend, but I think we're on, we're in a good spot so far. There's a lot of, a lot of pressure for staffing, a lot of pressure for. Extra hours, a lot of spread, a lot of pressure for student supports, but we're we're, I'm not really hard time hiring staff. So we're having to spend some money on contracted agency staff that we'd normally have for our. Internal hires, but. We're doing. We're on target.
Or do you have questions for Marshall?
I had a couple of questions. Sorry, I didn't send this to you earlier, but I figured you just know the answer, honestly. So looking at the highlights, transportation vehicle fund balances high because we didn't purchase a bus. Doesn't it, they'll come and take that money, the state, will the state come take that money back?
No, but what happens though, if we don't, if we don't stay on a regular bus purchasing cycle. Our depreciation, that money comes from the depreciation of our buses. And once our buses are fully depreciated, it will stop getting that revenue. So it's nice to, when you have the money to immediately spend it on a bus, even if you don't need a bus. I mean, it's like. Government system at its best, and if you don't need it, you still gotta spend it or else it'll go away.
Yeah.
So we have, we we really need to be in a good cycle of purchasing buses.
Okay, all right, and then.
Can I tag, because just we don't have to go back. So I guess who, because I I had that question. Who, how did we get off, like, that, because that wasn't us, we didn't decide the board didn't.
There's been some turnover in transportation, so it's a, it's been a transportation function and I've. Started having conversations with them about, let's get a couple of buses purchased this year. So that at least get them on the books, so we're gonna probably start about a page soon, so. I'll probably be reporting back on that frequently this year.
Okay, and again, just for anyone listening, just real quick, so. Transportation is a co-op between us and Lake Stevens, and I forget what percentage of of that that we.
I always say about twenty-five percent of the overhead costs of that cooperative, and we pay for all of our. Driver costs, our bus costs, all that stuff, but the the overhead we pay for about twenty-five percent of.
So the the turnover that you're talking about is in the transportation office. There that they're, you know, the transportation manager left and the new one, and so in that transition, they just, I guess, just didn't say on the. In the, in that, didn't just say on the site.
Yeah, it's something that hasn't been a pri- a priority on their end either for for their district either. It's just, you know, their whole office is not driving routes. Every, almost every day because there's such a shortage of bus drivers.
Which I guess I I just make one point and then you can ask questions, just as a tag to that, which. This is, this is me talking, as a board member, I feel that, you know, we. Need to grow to a place where we can have our own transportation, where we a hundred percent of that is solely for us. Where we have our own transportation manager and stuff, obviously, we're not there now, but it's kind of things like this where we have limited control, limited visualization. And stuff like that, just my two cents.
My next question was, currently on traffic, maybe five percent by ballot. How confident are you on that? I just want you to get a feeling.
Um, I would say I'm in. If we keep doing our job, seventy-five to eighty percent.
And 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 I I know the answer to your guess, but you're looking for any pitfalls that might blow that number up.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna tag off you because apparently you're taking the lead and we're just, we're just here for the ride.
Hey, when you, when you're not the president, you get to go for it.
No, but I like where you're going with that, because you started out with my number six and now you've gotten. Up a little bit higher, or no, actually, it's number seven on mine, so. You made the comment in the report that budget depends on monitoring any added costs like extra time, supplies and additional staffing. So I know that we got hit kind of hard, not even kind of very hard with time sheets at the end of the year last year for all kinds of. I additional time for something, I'm not sure what it was. How's that monitoring, like, and do we have a method to make sure we don't get slammed with. Extra time sheets that we do.
Yeah, we we just got all of our November time sheets, so I will be doing a summary of what the November time sheets look like. And then. Coming back to why, finding out why there's extra, if it's being paid for by a grant, that's mine. If a school decides that they want to use part of their building budget. To pay some extra staffing needs, that's that's fine, that's why they have a building budget, but if it's. Staffing that is above and beyond what was in the budget. Or what an IP calls for, or it's anything like that, that we need to really understand why. And, you know, we talk about any kind of staffing needs that come up, we talk about as a group in cabinet, even the smallest. A two hour student supervisor, we'll talk about that in cabinet as a group. And, you know, keep in mind the entire district where we're making these decisions.
And then, so I wanted to say thank you so much for the thirty, sixty, ninety look ahead. I truly appreciate that. I don't know if it, I'm I'm assuming you have some sort of chart as far as expenses thirty, sixty, ninety ahead, and if maybe you could include that for us. As we're looking at trying to get to this five percent, I don't know, that's something you have, but there's some version of that.
So one thing that we do is when we know that an expense is funded, we try and get it. Into a P O so that it's encumbered in our, in our, in our finances, so what in in the. In the expenditure per chart that I have in there, because they call them with encumbrances, those are. Upcoming expenses that we know we're gonna have, that we've identified and we've, we've. Put them into the system so that they show up on our reports.
Gotcha. So the time sheeting situation is different because it's not encumbered, it just comes in sideways.
Right.
Gotcha, I didn't mean to hijack.
Honestly, that, that's the biggest. That's the biggest monthly mystery is where where that's going, so we're, that's, that's our number one goal is to get a really good process in place for tracking that and. Understanding what impact it's gonna have.
Yeah, okay, appreciate that. Let's see. I don't think I had any other.
I've got one, if you're still contemplating, on the revenue forecast for December, the safety net, the one million dollars, I thought the number was different than that, where we're getting from safety net. Is it one million?
I just throw in a million, so we get, we get, last year we got about nine hundred thousand dollars in safety net, we got about two hundred and. Thirty thousand dollars in what they call community impact. So since we don't really know much yet, I, a million dollars is a re- reasonable estimate.
How much did we submit for?
Last year.
Well, so I guess that's why I'm, that's where I'm scratching my head, so this is. December revenue forecast, and in there you have a safety net of a million dollars.
This is for our, this is our end of year revenue forecast, this is what, this is as of. December's information, this is what we forecast our end of year revenue will be.
Right, so end of December.
End of, end of school year. So we're gonna, I think it has thirty-seven, it's almost like thirty-seven point.
Okay, so this is not end of December.
Right.
Because, okay, the title, December twenty-two fiscal report, is just the title of the presentation, and this is end of year.
Right.
This revenue forecast, okay, okay, I I get what you're saying now.
Great minds think alike, I was wondering the same thing, all right.
At least I need to change the title.
That's okay.
Two great minds, Mr.
All right, here's my. All right, last question. I know I have asked you this question before, I'm gonna preface this by saying. One of my favorite reddits is called Explain It Like I'm Five, right? So explain it like I'm five. Help me understand, we got the accounts payable for September on the December seventh. Board report, is that the thing that I was looking at? The attachment is September.
Would have done.
It said for the month of September, maybe I'm looking at it wrong.
Say that one more time, I think I.
What am I looking at? I've opened it nineteen times.
I didn't look and.
Seriously, I've got it open like everywhere, says that's October. Says for the month of September twenty twenty-two. So I'm just curious.
What do you?
I don't. It says, it was attached, it says for the month of September twenty twenty-two.
I see what you're seeing.
Yeah, so we have September.
At least October and probably November, so.
Yeah, I don't see November, so I was like, it's been sixty-eight days since the end of September.
It says at the top that it's eleven twenty-nine, but then all the thing it says.
I guess.
Oh.
Is that in your packet? Is that in his report or is that in?
It's on the agenda, it's attached to the agenda.
Yeah, well, here's October.
There's an October one and there's a September one.
Eleven twenty-nine.
When we had to submit it, because we submitted it last Friday.
Okay.
So.
Well, you, I don't know, can.
I think there'll be a nice. There's an agenda item to change the meeting structure. Second Wednesday will let data be more, we have the meeting second, fourth Wednesday, let, let the data be more.
Noted for future discussion. All right, so it was just maybe an erroneous attachment, it wasn't that it takes sixty-eight days to attach.
November might not, I mean, for a first, a first week in December.
Right.
November might not be there on a normal first weekend. But October should be there.
Okay.
So so just for clarity, good cut, so is that, is the September really November or it is September?
It it is September, it's September and October.
Okay, and October. No, okay.
We, I mean.
But if we, you're saying if we move it to second and fourth, maybe, okay.
Yeah.
I got, I got that piece, I guess I just wanted to make sure.
Reasonable for us not to have. The prior months in there, if we're gonna do it on the first Wednesday of the month.
Okay, I just, you know.
Okay, I, it's like I probably can't, I can't, I can't. If it were December fourteen, I can probably report out on November's financial data.
Okay, sounds like a plan. I will, I will take your suggestion for further discussion. All right, any other questions? Any questions? All right. Thanks, Marshall. And if you haven't checked out, explain it like I'm five, it's really fun for nerds like me, anyway, um, where did I put my agenda? All right, and now we are at. Executive summary of school improvement plans presented by Karen.
Can I, can I start off?
Yes.
Just with a comment. I should have sent this to you earlier, I've been a little with. You know, now I would say, I've been, I should have sent it earlier, but. I I figured I'd tell you this now, so to the end, one thing I would love to see with these, maybe send it as an attachment later, is the why. As you have, we were talking about what to improve, how much, when, for whom and what, you know. But the why we chose those numbers, like, why did we choose the number to want to improve by? Why, why that percentage, why not more, why not less? I just, something I'm gonna, I figured I'd just let you know about that. I don't want to seem like it's an attack at the end of the, at the presentation, just, I'm gonna want to, I'd love to know why.
That's great, and and thank you for the suggestion. It's actually a good carry with OSPI. Is the principles follow even template from the state and it doesn't ask for the why.
Yeah.
But we will do that, and I think that's a great suggestion to share at the state.
Yeah, I mean, because we're gonna improve by twelve percent. Why twelve? Why not thirteen? I mean, yeah, sorry.
And what about a how? That's all I know.
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah. I just want to give you a forewarning, that was maybe my question.
All right, thank you, thank you very much. Well, good evening, this presentation focuses on the context for this school improvement goals that our principals and assistant principals have developed. And again, I want to say thank you to them for being here this evening, in addition to the hard work that they're doing in their buildings and with planning. The executive summary document in the board packet provides a compilation of the improvement plan goals. For each of the schools, and then the school's plans include their action steps. Monitoring of progress, adjustments and ongoing results of the improvements. And in addition to the goals that you see here this evening, and the principals will share those plans with you when they present to the school board in that upcoming board meetings. I'm going to start with just very briefly the. The federal and state context, and, you know, as you know, each school in Washington State is required to submit to. The school board, a plan of improvement, and that happens annually. And our state obviously is a local controlled state. But even so, the requirements for improvement come from the federal level, and then our state law and the offices provide the directives and guidance. And I was, you know, we were thinking about since the time when most of us were in schools, since then accountability has just become. Much more prominent, has greatly increased, and truly we're thankful for our board's commitment to this important work, so thank you. I'm gonna leave this up just for a moment because I'll talk about the template, but moving to the local context. In our district, our principals and assistant principals lead the improvement process for their schools, and they do that together, the two leaders of the schools. They engage their leadership teams and the staffs in the work of developing their plans, putting their plans into action. Monitoring their progress, adjusting as needed to ensure anticipated movement toward attainment of goals. And evaluation, and then, of course, there are other stakeholders involved, their entire staff, like families and so forth. And we do use the optional template provided by the Office of the Superintendent of Public Instruction, OSPI. And that is the plan, that complete plan that the school administrators will submit to you. For the review prior to the board meeting scheduled for their school plan discussion. And then in looking specifically at goals, OSPI directs schools to identify SMARTY goals. And the acronym for SMARTY is here, and I'll just read it out loud, it's specific, measurable, attainable. Realistic, time bound, inclusive and equitable, and here we go to Director Butler's. Comment, which I think is great, OSPI asks us to include. The answers to these questions within the SMARTY goal, they make sense to add something that talks about the why behind the development of the goal. And then in addition to the SMARTY goals, our principals have added another. To their school improvement plans this year, and as you know, some time ago, the school board provided direction. For the development, we'll ensure that all of our schools would reach the smarter balanced state averages in. Reading and math, English, language, drugs and math by the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-fourth school year. And then Dr. Middleton directed our administrative teams at the schools to create a goal, and he also provided a template. So that would be a support as they were developing the goal, so as you look through, you'll see that even on a primary school. Which doesn't administer the smarter balance assessment included a goal that helps our secondary readers to prepare for their eventual. Participation in the test the following year. And this slide is one of the most critical aspects of school improvement, it's the plan due. And this slide is one of the most critical aspects of school improvement. It's the plan, do, study, act, cycle of continuous improvement. And as Dr. Middleton and I were talking through this, uh, presentation, what I would be sharing with you, acknowledge that many of you, well, all of you have experiences, rich experiences outside of. What you do here as leaders, uh, many of you in the business world, um, using continuous improvement processes. And then other fields also use a cycle of continuous improvement to guide work for better outcomes. And for instance, in medicine, new therapies and medicines are developed, move through a cycle or cycles of testing, adjustments are made. And just to ensure that when finally something is, um, provided to be used, that doctors and patients, um, are successful with the. Results and education is similar. And then when we work through the cycle, uh, many variables need to be considered. And when we look at this graphic, I'm going to take just a moment to talk about each part because they're all important, but they're. It's critical that each piece is done well in order for improvement to be successful. So the first piece is the principals and assistant principals developing their goals. And that goes back to the why, using the data that they have available, using processes that are recommended, using research-based practices to create their. Goals and then they plan their action steps. What is it that they're going to be doing to improve and move the schools toward the plans, toward the goals? And then it seems obvious, but the do is up there for a reason. It's a critical phase. In schools, uh, so much happens every day. And it's so important that principals and assistant principals are staying on top of implementing. The plans that were made and monitoring for implementation, because there will be various people at the schools who are working on the parts. And then ensuring that that is being done and there's data. Are we implementing as we said, um, in alignment with our plans? And then the next phase is study and that's where really the data is, um. Analyzed deeply, um, teams are looking at, did we achieve our intended results? And the principals right now are leading teams and doing weekly work, teacher teams to the professional learning communities. And then in their staff meeting, so it's an ongoing process, but what they're looking at is. Are we implementing? Are we attaining the goals that we had intended to attain? Are we making progress? We don't want to wait until the end of the year. How are we doing that on a regular cycle basis? And then in the act phase, that's where the analysis, uh, excuse me, the analysis of the data determines whether. Maybe a change that was, oh, that it worked well enough, places needs to be abandoned. Are there adjustments that need to be made? But we've seen it, um, examples of highly successful changes. And that's where the principals and their teams are saying, this really worked. We're going to continue with this. We, um, also just want to emphasize that it is really important throughout the whole process. To have a laser focus on the goals, processes, that the. And then, um, just sharing briefly the support for the principals as they do this work. Um, I know this question for. Comment had come up previously and we thought it might be helpful just to share a little bit of background. Uh, Dr. Middleton and I work with a highly skilled consultant who is, um, has been proven to be effective in school improvement work. And, um, we provide a monthly three hour professional learning team session and the directors, um, in academic areas, principals and assistant principals attend. And then Dr. Middleton and I meet monthly with the individual teams, principals and assistant principals. To discuss improvement toward the shared purpose of the team's success. And then. Principals also receive guidance and supports through O S P I and our regional educational service districts. And then they can work with improvement coaches. They could be in webinars that are offered and they gain access to research-based tools. And then we did write a grant, um, and we've been doing this on a regular basis to provide access for resources so that we have. Um, additional coaching time for the principals that is directly related to their. And then our next steps, um, we're looking ahead to each of the schools presenting their school improvement plans. Um, discussing in detail the goals, how those were developed by the teams at their schools. And, um, why those are important. And then we have talked about last year, um, we used a tighter version. And talking about making that even, um, uh, just, just providing the structures so that our school board is able to get the information that they would like. Um, they will talk about the action steps that they set. They'll be able to share with you how the monitoring progress is going. And what they've already adjusted, what they found has worked well, what they're updating. And then, um, where there are progresses in relation to the intended goals at the end of the year. And so we'll be meeting at the schools to do that work. And so in closing. Just really want to again, thank you for your commitment and your support of this work that's at the heart of what we do in our schools. It's about each student achieving. To the highest levels to their potential, but achieving benchmark and beyond so that they can be successful. So, thank you.
Questions for Dr. Mans?
I guess I can jump in. So, one of the challenges of, of this, and this isn't a new feeling, I guess I've, I've always had this feeling is. When we talk about these goals, there's no lens in looking where our existing goals are, right? The twenty one, twenty two, how are we performing towards those goals? What was working, what, what isn't? And, you know, and then using that to then inform of, okay, well. You know, this is where we're going, you know, based upon that and, you know, and this is an improvement or this is a, from our previous goal. We, we're only looking kind of in the place of time, not looking back and going, okay, wh- what have we done? What was our goal for this year? How are we performing towards that? Those types of things. So I actually pulled up our goals for twenty one, twenty two. And, and I'm confused, well, not confused, that's the wrong word. I guess I, I just want to dive in deeper into the data of it. So. Our SMARTY goal for Mountain Way, and I'm, I'm just using Mountain Way because it's the first one that came up. Was just in reading, um, was to increase, uh, from a fourteen percent, uh, to a twenty two percent. Um, based upon, uh, I ready in October of twenty one, uh, and twenty two, based on the May of twenty two diagnostic. And so it, if, um, and then also, hold on, I should have clicked off that page. I have tons of tabs open. Uh, was to increase low income students from eleven to twenty two percent. So then when I look at, um, our goal for, uh, twenty two, twenty three goal. Uh, it's to go from twelve, um, to thirty percent. So obviously we're starting lower, uh, than we previously were, um, and growing to thirty percent. Uh, and then, uh, for multilingual students from zero to twenty percent. But the low income student goal is gone. Uh, there's no discussion of how we performed to that goal. We, we're going to, we previously said eleven to twenty two percent. You know, you know, hey, we were successful there. We can move on to something else. It appears that we're, we're, we're kind of, we're, we're moving on from that and now going multilingual. Which is important. I guess I'm not belaboring that, but. I, I guess I would contend, if we aren't hitting our goal for low income, maybe we are, maybe we aren't. Why are we taking our eye off of that ball and now focusing on multilingual? And then specifically, again, looking at data, what do we, are we forecasting to hit our twenty two percent goal? Sorry, that's my alarm to tell me to stop eating. Um, and that's why. That's why he sounds angry because I, I don't want to stop eating. Um, uh, and so what are we doing different? If we aren't forecasting to meet our goal, what are we going to do different this time? And I know maybe we'll get into, we'll probably get into those weeds as we're, as we're talking individually. Um, so I, I, I'll, I'll stop there and let you give some feedback before I, I, I give more.
Well, and I think, and, and I know you're ready to jump in. I'm just gonna say an overall statement. Um, I, I think what you said is wise and, and Dr. Middleton and I are always trying to balance, you know, not putting like a lot of. We don't want it to clutter when, when we provide, um, but I think it makes sense to go ahead and have the previous year goals and what comes to you. When we present this whole improvement plan, even if the state is just requiring the one year at a time, that would be an easy piece to add and then just to add a bridge. Conversation from each school to explain why this course shifted. I know I can see this is why my principal ready to. Um.
Right questions and things that I think about often at night as I'm going to sleep. So as you are aware from the goal, our scores dropped, right? From I ready, so from our fall to spring, they went up. And then when we tested again this next fall, they went back down. And so I started the goal where they were in November. And then I was like, oh my gosh, you know, we need to at least make the twenty two percent, but we're not getting anywhere if we don't extend it to at least thirty percent. It's really super low still because that's only thirty percent of our kids at benchmark. But if we're starting at twelve percent at benchmark right now, if we get to thirty percent, then that is a push that we're gonna really try. But, um, free and reduced or the, the poverty, the, uh, low income is really hard to track in I ready. And so that's why then we kind of switched that goal and went to multilingual learner. And we feel like any supports that we're giving right now to our multilingual learner will help all of our students, especially our students of poverty as well.
Okay.
So those strategies are good for students that, that need that.
Got it. And, and not to pick on, on you guys, you're, you're the first one, right? So you're the first one that I can compare. And I know. We can get really deep, deep, deep into this when, when we're, we're talking about this, um, uh, when we're reviewing each individual one. Um, but I guess just, just throwing it out there. So, um. You know, if we can have a discussion based to, when that time comes, based upon. You know, specifically how we're performing to the previous, to the existing goal, I guess I would say. And then specifically, wh- what we're going to do differently if we aren't doing it. And then also a discussion of if the number that we have is realistic, right? Because, and we, we've had this conversation before and I'll just say for, for, because maybe you haven't, you know, I, I live in a, in a, in a, obviously I, I work in the private industry. Um, in a, in a sales base, right? A goal is an expectation, right? If I don't hit a goal, I, every, there's a joke in my thing, you can miss your goals once, but if you miss it twice, bye, right? So a goal is, is, is an expectation. If you don't hit this goal twice, you will lose your job, right? And I know that we're in a different world. We aren't selling widgets, all of those things, but. I, I think that we, with the same veracity, we should, we should focus on our goals of, this is an absolute, move everything out of the way. Let's talk about deeply it, as Director Veach's initial of, of, of roadblocks we can move out of the way because we gotta, gotta, gotta hit that goal. Um, and if we don't, well then we need to have an honest discussion of what happened, what are we going to do different? You know, do we have the right people in the, in the right places? Are we spending money in the right places? Those types of things. Because I think that has to go along with that stuff. So, you know, if we, uh, i- i- if, if the, if the thirty percent is, is, is a number you think is realistic. That was great, but you can already guess what my next question is. Well, you thought the twenty two percent was realistic. Why didn't you hit that?
Um, actually we did at the spring.
Okay.
We met our goals last spring.
And by the way, that was rhetorical. I didn't expect you to answer right now.
Proud. We didn't meet it.
Yes.
But then when they tested again in. October, because we use the new scores from October, not the spring scores.
Right.
Then they went way down.
Right.
Again, so then we started where they were from October and built a new goal. If we didn't look at October and we wrote the goal in September, we would have used that twenty two percent as our starting.
Right.
And then built that up.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, a- and I didn't expect you to, but thank you for giving, giving, no, 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 I, I appreciate your, your passion and I, I, I actually, I really, really do. So. Um, like I said, this is just kind of a, a preview of, of, of really how deep in the weeds I'd like to go once we individually kind of talk about that stuff. So, thank you.
Other questions?
I asked man at the beginning.
Well, all right. I think, I appreciate what you brought to us today and I, I think the, the how and the why are important questions, right? Um, and I think Carl actually. Um, brought up the point that I was, which was, I don't remember. Us seeing both how we performed last year with our goals. So I think like connecting those, I get that the state only wants. A moment in time, but I think we need to see a path, whatever that path looks like. And, and I don't need reasons for the past, right? Just what are we gonna do forward to? To try something else. I mean, we don't know, we're gonna be perfect, but. But we know we're gonna try something else and we're gonna move in that direction and, and tell me why we're moving in that direction. Cause honestly, I, I rely on the trained professionals to help me out with that. So, thank you.
Um, Chair, can we go back to the continuous improvement slide? Because I, I can't emphasize enough that second one of do. We can plan all day long. We can have all these beautiful plans, but if we're not willing to do something and do something differently. We're gonna get the same results. And so it's really a different way of saying what was on, on my little graph of. We don't want to be that black line. We want to be the one that, that does something. And look at those results and based on those results, if we need to throw something out, we'll throw something out and do something different and we'll act, but. We, we gotta get out of the plan quadrant and, and really get to do something and do something differently.
And I echo that. I've seen, you know, we've. Dr. Middleton and I talked and I appreciate, and I'm sure that he's had this conversation with most other people in the room, but I appreciate that he has a strong goal, a strong vision of. Of where we're going academically and how important that is. And whatever needs to happen, whatever we need to do to get that into the classrooms, to the students. And not just us in this room talking about it, but the doing part of it, like showing up in the classroom and getting it done, whatever has to happen. And I said it at the beginning, because part of what we learned at WASTA, right? It's very important to have the right people in the right positions to get this, get. To do the work, right? So I look forward to the reports that we would get. You know, with, with the data with that on the how and the why. So thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Thank you. All right. Yeah, seriously, I've got to remember, right? We really just board reports, board reports, three F's.
Is there a chance to dismiss?
Yes, we can dismiss the principals if you'd like to go. We've been here a while, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you want to give like a swing?
In ten minutes, in, depending upon your board reports.
Her mom likes her to begin by eight o'clock if she can.
So.
Okay. All right. So back to board reports.
Sorry, it's funny. I always forgot to do that. Carl had to remind me every time. Let the principal go. Oh, yeah.
Well, I thought about it, but I, I didn't think we'd be long on this one. But anyway, um, we don't have W I A A, so we'll go to community report.
Okay, um, lots is going on right now, which is kind of cool to see. You're really kind of getting back to normal and doing normal stuff. So, um. I got to, uh. Uh, go to the chamber meeting, um, on the first, uh, while I was there, it was new, but, um. They are back up and running and, um, they were kind of discussing whether or not they wanted to dissolve the chamber and just be, um. Committees or if they wanted to keep the chamber. They're keeping the chamber and they've voted in, um. President, vice president, secretary and treasurer is what they were up to. Um, they are just asking anybody and everybody to come to the meetings and for anybody in the community who has a business. Did it come and join? I think right now it doesn't cost anything. They waived the fee until January or something like that. Um, so they just kind of want everybody to be involved and participate in the next meeting for that is, um. Thursday, January twelfth at six P M. And they're held in, um, City Hall. Um, and then I also got to go check out, um, the high school performance of Charlie Brown and it was wonderful. They did a great job, um, and. Um, so it was really great to see that and I hope to see more performances from, from them because they were really good. Um. You guys kind of covered the food drive. Um, Monty Cristo has a family game night, uh, coming up on Friday. And there's like bingo and concessions and it's gonna be a lot of fun. So everybody's invited to come. Um, I believe it's. Um, I believe it's five dollars. And then Mountain Way um is having a holiday bizarre on Saturday. Um, and Santa's gonna be there with pictures and all that kind of stuff. So um, and there's tons of other things going on, but that's just kind of inside of the highlights.
Thank you. Legislative.
Question. I I might have missed it. What days are deliveries for the food drive to be known? Fourteenth and fifteenth, fourteen fifty. Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, a couple of uh big things. So I I kind of briefly talked about my meeting um with. Uh, what is shortly to be Representative Lowe, um, who did win um his election in the thirty ninth. Um, he was nice enough to come up and meet. Um, we had a wonderful discussion about um. Regionalization and had sped funding and uh I I thought it was it was really good. Um, as well as um a kind of a discussion about inviting um our all of our um legislators in the thirty ninth. Uh, to uh come in uh before the session starts to come and actually, you know, participate. Uh, Dr. M and I have talked and uh we're gonna try to get them actually for the 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 food, um, the 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 food handout. So um, I we just got that tonight, so I'll reach out to them and see if that's something that I can get set up. Um, I'd love to also, um, if we can, you know, have them actually see our buildings and and and, you know. Teaching the classrooms and and kind of, you know, um, uh, our steam building at the middle school. It's a lot to pack into a day, so you and I can can talk more about, you know, what that looks like and stuff like that. Um, so um, I guess more to come on that. Uh, one of the things that I I sent um to um uh Dr. M and Tina. So because I am, I am the WASDA legislative rep for District One, I'm also technically a member of. Of the Federal Relations Network, which is basically the the uh the federal school boards uh across the country. And um they have a a day on the hill um where uh or. Kind of a day on the hill where they go to Capitol Hill um and they speak to our federal um representatives about um. Uh, specific items this year's I D E A, special education funding. Uh, there's actually a mandate. Um, uh, the the federal government has never stood up to the requirements of the of of funding for special education. Uh, free meals and safety and healthy school buildings and fundings. Um, uh, so. Normally I would just see that email and I would delete it as I have every single year. And so there was this year, uh, I thought, huh, okay, well, those are important things. I want to try to keep the heat. Up with special education as much as possible, as well as universal free meals. So I'm I'm twisting it. Certainly I don't have necessarily the time to spend, but in my in my drive to be more like Director Butler, I was like. Hmm, should I go to this? So that's not something I'm necessarily asking right now. We can talk individually. This is really the only place that I can say in a public meeting is I can talk to everybody all at once. So I guess I'm contemplating that. There is a cost to that. I don't necessarily know if. I'd want the district to pay for it or if I pay for it out of my own pocket. I mean, there there i- if we feel like it's important, again, we can have more conversations about that later. But I guess just throwing that out there that, you know, uh, maybe if there was ever a year to go, maybe this is the year to go. To really try to lean in as much all in to this type of stuff um as possible. So um, just throwing that out there. Uh, the other thing, just to 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 put the board on the on the same page, one of my. Um, I've got a lot of passion, so I probably should stop using the word passions. But one of the things that at some point I'm going to, on behalf of of legislative, I'm I I'm going to. Come before our board chair who sets the agenda and asks for to be on the agenda. Um, is a a resolution um of a change to the bylaws of WASDA, which has to come from our board. Legislatively, by the way, has to has to come from our board and for other boards to be able to be voted on at General Assembly next year. Uh, and that is a uh change to remove weighted vote from uh voting on general assemblies. I'm glad to see you guys nodding your head. So for anyone that.
Promoted.
So for anyone that doesn't know, um, uh, WASDA's positions legislatively, its positions as far as the way that it operates, what it passions is is set by us. Board directors, uh, we at General Assembly vote on positions and and pol- and all of those types of things. Um, so in the beginning, it's a one to one vote. Every district gets one vote. Uh, if there's, if there's three districts, I believe, uh, that don't like the outcome of that vote, they can call for what's called a weighted vote. And that weighted vote yeah allows additional votes based upon the size of the district. So if you think just numbers wise, right? Not every school district goes to WAS, goes to General Assembly, right? So if you have a um, you know, a city, a Seattle School District, a Lake Washington School District, a Bellevue School District. If you have like four of the biggies, four or five of the biggies, they literally have the power to do whatever they want to from a vote standpoint. If 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 they're aligned, um, that to me is not democracy. And that is not the intentions of WASDA to let, you know, what is the big kids in the room tell the little kids in the room what what's good for them. Um, and uh, but in order to do that, I have to have five boards, make formal board action. Uh, then I have to submit that to um uh Tim Garchow, who is the superintendent for or the this WASDA. And then at General Assembly, we vote on it. The nice thing about voting on a vote to remove weighted vote is you don't get a weighted vote.
About that.
It's a one to one vote. And so, you know, because one of the things I've heard from a lot of, even here in District Area One, a lot of small school districts is. Oh, WASDA doesn't represent the ideals of my community, WASDA, you know, blah, 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 you know, negative about WASDA. Which is probably true, but what my comment next is, is that, well, we, school boards, get to set what WASDA is about. And if you're not what about WASDA is about, then get involved and let's change what WASDA is about, right? And you know, and and at the end of that day, it should be one vote, right? That's democracy. So um, at some point I've got, I will do a formal type up, you know, I would love our board to be the first one. And then I'm basically gonna walk the format of that to at least the four other school districts, hopefully more that will come alongside of us. That is going to force the issue to the forefront so that we can vote on it uh and then go forward from there. So just have an update on on where we're going. Um, I'll just pause there. If you have any questions, basically.
Any questions?
I was gonna ask if you had already found or others, but based off of uh, who wants to conference, I don't think you should have trouble finding. We waved it. Yeah, Carl and I were in the same small, and that was one of the topics of conversations. I don't think that should be a trouble.
All right. Moving along, items from the floor. I mean, we have nobody signed up for that. Good. Unfinished business, none new business. Marshall, here it is, change in regular board meeting dates. Um, this is a discussion and.
No, next item.
For a discussion, this was something that I actually asked Dr. Middleton to put on the agenda was. The question came up from the community, why are we at the same. Day and overlapping time as city council? I've had that question. I asked Dr. Middleton because I feel like this has come up a few times, but I couldn't remember why that would be. Uh, he said, boy, I've wondered that same question. So here we are to have a discussion about it. I would propose that we would move to second and fourth Wednesday so that we don't overlap with city council. But in the business report. Marshall gave us the point that if we move to the second Wednesday, he that would provide him time to give us the most recent financial information.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is anyone here even opposed to that idea of just a straw poll, just getting that like for the room?
No, I think that's it. There's our discussion.
As as a community liaison, I.
Yeah, well, and I'm supposed to put it out there what it is before we.
Just just for discussion, I'll just drop it here. So I've I've asked this question when I was meeting liaison.
Yeah.
I asked this question and and what I was told, different admin, different superintendent at that point, was that. Um, the schools, the individual schools try really hard to not schedule anything on board meeting days. Um, as I think it's our policy, is our policy.
Yeah.
And.
Policy says Wednesday, not board meeting day.
Oh, really?
As just a, so I remember, because the thought was, we'll change to a Tuesday or a Thursday. And I never even thought about changing this to the second and fourth.
Yeah.
Well, we never thought about just changing which Wednesday.
Just the repetition of it. So. I was, again, different superintendent, I was told that it would be extremely cumbersome. For the for the schools to change schedules of already like, you know, we always do this on the second Tuesday or second Wednesday or whatever. And, you know, I guess shame on me for not digging deeper into it. So I guess I just dropped that out there. Do you feel the same way, Dr. M or?
Uh, like like Director Kincaid said, I I would like to go to the city council. Once a month at least, just to see. I I'd like to be able to report to them some of the things that are going on in the district. So I I see no problem at all.
Okay. And I just want to, out there, having been board chair for five of the past, you know, many years. We have talked about it, but no one ever thought about this change in the Wednesday. We talked about changing to a Tuesday or a Thursday or a Monday. We never even thought about this changing which Wednesday of the month.
You just need.
It's like, oh. Because I I talked to Joshua, this is like, well, we usually, we don't want to change which day of the week. Like, no, let's change the week. I'm like, oh. Uh. Well, yeah, why don't we just do that?
So in that vein, then if we do that, I imagine you want this to be immediate.
Like for January.
Okay, so um.
Because we would like to keep Director Butler for an additional week.
Unintended uh extra, yes. Um, uh, so is there anything, I guess, what's following that vein of thinking, is there anything that's a conflict now that of that we won't be able to school related?
Uh, I looked ahead today and I didn't see any big conflicts. I I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
So I was hoping to bring up now with the Christmas break and everything, it's sort of the world restarts in January. Well, I.
So we're looking at January fourth as our next meeting then?
No, eleven.
Oh, sorry, second.
Except for calendar, we're just changing.
All right. Any other discussion? Can I can I make a motion that we change the. Regular board meeting days to the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent and uh any discussion?
Yeah, I just updated my calendar. I I guess I I just, I would like to say that uh on the the additions, which I think that we need to have. Motion for the additions, it was uh cool to see uh John Brockman um. As a new hire for basketball coach at the middle school. Um. And then um. I guess. I didn't see. We had some resignations, but I didn't see any letters or or anything for those. I don't know if that's, if I just missed it or.
I got one today in my box and I haven't.
Okay.
I can get that to you guys.
All right, um.
I make a motion accepting to send agenda with the additions.
A second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And.